Good evening. I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Charter Revision Commission for March 15, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance could apply in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Commissioners could just state your name for attendance, starting with Mr. Carmody.
Sam Carmody.
Mark Gingrass.
Jim Piscotti.
Jonathan Chapel.
Christina Tada.
Bob Swick.
Jim Seiter.
Tom Corrigan.
Pat Cole.
And Mrs. Morgenstein and Chairman Knight are both out of town, so could not be here tonight. Item three on our agenda is the public hearing on charter revision, which is the public opportunity to speak on their vision of the Town of Wallingford Charter. Just before we begin, I just wanted to give a few statements on the work of the Charter Revision Commission thus far. This is our third of three public hearings. We were required to have two, and we did add a third at the midpoint of our work, as was requested by the public. So this is our third, and the Town Council will have one more public hearing once we submit our draft to them. We also welcome the public to our meetings, and our minutes are posted online and are also available through the Town Clerk's office. And thanks to our secretary, our minutes are fairly extensive and, I think, give great detail into what went on in our meetings and how we voted and the changes that were made. Our process for what we've done so far, we had charge items from the Town Council, which we reviewed and went over. We took correspondence from the public and any ideas that we were given at the public hearings, and also through email correspondence from the public. We reviewed the ballot questions from the 2009 Charter Revision Commission, and we looked at their work and what they did. We took ideas from any of our Commissioners and anything that they wanted to discuss, we went over. We consulted with department heads in the Law Department, as well as the Mayor, on anything that they thought they might want changed or not changed. And then we went through the Charter line by line, chapter by chapter, word by word. And so we've reviewed the Charter several times through various means and from different angles. And the draft that you may have seen, which is also posted online, shows our proposed changes. And anything we did change was given great consideration and due diligence, and likewise, anything that was not changed was also given the same due diligence. And so things that were not changed does not mean we did not consider them. Everything in the Charter was thoroughly considered. So for the format of our public hearing, it will be the same as the last two. This is the public's opportunity to speak to us and to give us any comments, but it's not a question and answer. So for specific questions, we would refer you back to our minutes. And to start, I just want to read, we had a couple of emails sent to us since our last meeting, so I just want to read those into the record. The first email begins, "Commissioners, regarding the proposed change to who appoints the environmental planner on page 17 of the revised documents, shouldn't it state who shall serve as staff to the Inland, Wetlands and Watercourses Commission and the Conservation Commission? There have been problems in the past with the Inland, Wetlands and Watercourses Commission thinking that the environmental planner belongs solely to their commission, and I feel very strongly that it is a mistake to leave the Conservation Commission out of this sentence and make it look as if she or he serves only the one commission." This is from the environmental planner's job description.[279.12][279.12]"This position provides staff assistance to both the Inland, Wetlands and Watercourses Commission and Conservation Commission, and serves the town as the administrative staff for environmental and natural resources issues. As staff to the Conservation Commission, considers recommendations and prepares plans and recommends policies for the management of town-owned or managed passive recreational forests and open spaces, assesses the condition of the town's natural resource base, and makes suggestions to the commission for improvement and protection. As required, coordinates and oversees implementation of management plans, conducts periodic inspections of properties under the town's jurisdiction, oversees the town's farmland lease program, conducts enforcement action as necessary, advises and assists the town in acquiring land, property rights for conservation and open space purposes, conducts commission educational activities and provides opportunities for public access and enjoyment of the town's open space resources while maintaining their ecological integrity. As you are all keenly aware, the revised Town Charter will be the standard to which we are all held for decades to come, and I urge you not to put the Conservation Commission in a position where another commission will think it has sole jurisdiction over a shared staff person. I cannot attend your meeting on Wednesday due to short notice and the fact that I have concert tickets previously purchased. Jeff Borny will be attending on behalf of the Conservation Commission. Thank you for your attention to this matter, Mary Heffernan." And the second email we received begins, "Greetings, Charter Revision Commission. I just wanted to suggest a grammatical change to the Charter. Instead of using his/her to use the word 'their,' and instead of he/she to use the word 'they' because it reads smoother and doesn't reference gender at all. I do have quite a few other questions and concerns, mostly concerns, about changes made to the Charter, which we can discuss at the upcoming public meeting. I would have preferred to discuss them with the commission personally during the revision meetings, but since I was unable to attend the first several meetings, I am just seeing many of the changes right now, and there isn't really any time or a proper venue to discuss them before the public meeting. Thank you, Jessica Wysocki." So now I would just like to open up the public hearing to any members of the public who would like to speak. Mr. Borny.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Jeff Borny, and thank you for reading Mary Heffernan's comments.
Can you go closer to the microphone, thanks?
Thanks, Cindy. Jeff Borny is my name. I'm with the Wallingford Conservation Commission, and I'm here on behalf of Mary Heffernan, whose comments were just read into the record. Thank you very much. And just, I urge you to accept her comments. I think they'll make a fairly smoothly running system run even a little smoother. But I'm here, if anybody has any questions regarding Mary's comments, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. I think our next agenda item will be discussing possible changes or revisions to what we've done, so if you'd be able to possibly stay for that, that might be helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I know you voted on it, but since you voted on something, is there a possibility of, I know you're not going to answer, voting on something else in the PUC? I know you've kept it at the three, but it, from what's going on and the size of the budget that that commission handles, and if you're missing one person, you're down to two people with a $90 million, $80 million budget, which is only going to increase to probably $100 million next year. I don't see, I read your minutes. I just think that if the commission has the ability to rethink it, to make it into a five-member panel at minimum, I think it would benefit the town of Wallingford to have more input into it, and for the times that there's people, because there was months that you were short one member, and you were down to two members were running the whole commission. So you could have had a stalemate, 1-1, 1-1 vote constantly for, I think he was gone for almost six months. So I mean, I think that for those type of basic reasons, you should increase that size of the, that commission, or at least relook at it and come up with a reason why you shouldn't. I mean, I don't see the reason, just because it's running good now doesn't mean, that's not an answer. I mean, you really should look at the whole picture on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. You can say if you have more, that's fine.
I can only read my own writing.
Thank you. That's fine.
Let's see here, ethics. I know what you did in ethics was you just took out the second part of the ethics. So essentially, you've left it all the same, the ethics and the thing. I was hoping that you could define what appearance means, so it wouldn't be what appearance of a conflict would be in your Charter. This way, it wouldn't be ambiguous that somebody would be able to know what it is, because that's been, for some members of the public, been an issue for many years. Also, that if you had the ability to have put in a Charter, I don't know where you put it, I mean, beyond ethics, that there should be some training in ethics. There, I mean, most, you see what's going on in Southington right now and other communities. We don't have that here in town. And it would be nice to have, I know most corporations have extensive ethics, that you have to be able to understand what ethics are. Here in town, you don't see it. So I would hope that, I mean, not that you don't have ethics, I mean, that there's, the training's not there, what appearance of conflict of interest are, what an appearance of conflict of interest are, are not there. So I would hope that the commission could take a quick look at that. I mean, you might say, why, I did bring some of these up, the first one, the second meeting was on a Jewish holiday, and you knew that we, there was a few of us that corresponded back to the commission, that because of the Jewish holiday, we would not be able to be here to make any of these inputs. The Controller's Office, on, they have budgets, but they also have everything audited. And our auditors have been here for many, many years, and we don't go out to bid on that. They get waivers to go, so they can keep the same auditor. Some communities have it in their Charter, that after X number of years, it has to go out to bid. You can't have a waiver, it has to go out. Sometimes you can't even, some, but some communities will have it where you can't use the same auditor after X number of years. So we have a budget, $160 million, thereabouts, and only growing. To have the same auditor in the same place, people are familiar what goes on, not that anything's going on here, but the budget, the Charter is for future generations also. And so, and it doesn't get opened that often. So hopefully, you would take a look at that, just to put it in there. It's just, it's checks and balances, and that type of thing, and not anything that's our control, but we can have a controller in place for 30 years, and you can have the same auditing firm for 30 years. You can hide a lot in 30 years. And so those types of things that should be open up to have new people. I can only read my own writing, I don't, didn't bring mine. I know you're not going to discuss term limits or veto powers, so, but those are...
We did discuss them.
Oh, no, I meant, you're not going to bring them back up again. That's what I meant. Those are things that... Referendums. You have, we have to have 20% of the vote go out. I know you discussed it, but maybe 15 or 10% of the population. And if you can put it in the Charter, there's always discussion, or has been, for the few charters that I've seen, how many polling places you're going to have open, how many hours they're going to be open. Maybe if it's in the Charter, that won't be a discussion, because at some discussions, if the power to be is one side, they, and the other side is the one who's against that, the power to be can really stifle what the other side wants by limiting the hours and by limiting the number of polling places. So if, to be fair to everybody involved and in their referendum, let the citizens decide, maybe you could put in there that three, four polling places have to be open, not just one, as has been discussed in the past, and that the hours would be regular polling hours from six to eight, or something of that nature. So at least, it would take it away from the council, from them deciding, and, you know, it could be, become all political in that respect. And you don't want it to be political in a referendum, and once it gets to that point, I mean, it's political to begin with, but at that particular point, let the citizens decide and give them full opportunity in the democracy. They should be able to discuss or vote on it without having any restrictions on them and bottlenecks by not having enough places. I can't read anything else on here, so I'll leave it that. Don't you, in this, you can answer. So there's another agenda item that if you're going to discuss anything, oh, well, first, how many more, you're done with your meetings?
No.
Well, but anything you discuss tonight, you can come, but you're coming back in April potentially to vote on, or have another meeting to vote.
Yeah, so we have one more agenda item this evening where we can discuss anything if the commission chooses. And then we have a meeting on April 6, and we need to submit our draft to the council, I believe, by April 30. So we still have some time to make revisions.
And you plan on having this for the November election?
That is not up to us.
Okay.
That's up to the council. We have discussed it, and we would hope that that is when it, when it's put up on the ballot.
Right, that would make the most sense.
Yes, that's our hope.
So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Mayor?
Bill Dickinson, 112 Grebe Road. Now and then I serve as mayor, I guess so. Each hat is here, but I just want to congratulate all of you. It's not simple, it's tedious, there's a lot of things you have to absorb in the way of understanding how all of these things interact and intersect in the workings of government, from finance to, throughout the Charter. You can't understand it without understanding how those things intersect and interact. And you've done a good job, a thorough job of looking to understand that and maintaining an efficiency of government in terms of chain of command and making everyone accountable. I congratulate you, it's not simple, but I think you have a good work product, and you should feel proud of your effort, and you're passing on a good document for the consideration and hopefully ultimately the approval of the town.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? So at this point, I will close the public hearing, and we will move on to Agenda Item Four, which is discussion and possible action concerning additional revisions. Oh, we should have a vote on closing the public hearing. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the public hearing is closed, thank you. So Agenda Item Four, discussion and possible action concerning additional revisions and/or edits to existing revisions. So we can, we can talk about now whatever any commission members would like to talk about, whether it was brought up tonight or anything else that you found as you're going over the draft. And we also have a meeting on April 6, so anything that we may need Corporation Council for, I would hope that she would be present on April 6, so anything that we need her for, we can wait until then. But at this point, does anybody have anything they would like to discuss? Yes, Mr. Gingrass.
When are you planning to bring up Mary Heffernan's request for discussion?
We can discuss that now, is that...
Then let's, why don't we start with that, then?
Sure. Okay. I think I'll start by just making a comment on that, Ms... So the environmental planner, as you know, we did change that, so that the environmental planner does not report to the Inland, Wetlands and Watercourses. She reports to them, but that is not, will not be her boss anymore. So that was the position that was reporting to a volunteer board, and we changed that, so that will be an appointed position, appointed by the mayor. And our hope, in the way that we worded that, was that we left it vague enough where her boss and her job description will be able to determine which commissions and which boards she would be staffed to. If anybody else has anything to add to that work, okay. Ms. Cole?
Yeah, Pat Cole. I saw Mary's email, and we had decided we weren't going to add any more boards or commissions into the Charter that weren't there. So I would have a concern about referencing the Conservation Commission in those terms, because we have not put that in the Charter. And if it is covered in her job description, that would control anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If you'd like me to comment briefly on that, the Conservation Commission is an advisory commission, arises pursuant to state statute. As long as the ordinance, and we have an ordinance, as long as the ordinance is in effect, there would be a need for someone to be staff for that commission. The commission would have to function. So I, I'm, it's not clear to me that there's a significant issue here with regard to either the workings of the Conservation Commission or the responsibility of the town to provide sufficient staff for its, the conduct of its business.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments on that topic? Are there any other topics any Commissioner would like to bring up? Okay. All right, yes.
In terms of, are we okay with the document as is, or...
Yes, so any revisions, any comments you want to make on that?
Okay. No comments for me.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Cole?
As I was going through the Charter again, on page nine, the section regarding constables, and no, Sam, I'm not going to propose that we get rid of them. The section begins, "Beginning in 1992." Did we talk about eliminating that, or whether we needed that phrase?
I didn't see when I compared it to the minutes that we, that we took that out. So if that's something that you'd want to take out, we could make a motion to remove that.
Well, I don't see a need for it. At this point, we either have constables or we don't, and I think probably that phrase came in, in the 1989 revision. So I would make a motion to, to remove that language in Chapter Four, Appointed Officers, Section Three, Constables, to remove the phrase "Beginning in 1992."
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. And I also found a few things, but I think they're mostly grammar, which we had already voted on, the Law Department can change, so I can just send those to the Law Department. Oh, in Chapter, what is now Chapter Seven, Department of Law, this is page 11 in the I believe the headings that we voted on are not shown. If anyone recalls, I thought in the minutes that I said we were going to have headings there. I'm assuming that would be a grammatical change. So as long as nobody has any, any issue with that, I can submit that to the Law Department. The word says A, B, and C. I had in our minutes, the November 10 minutes, that we had put headings on those. So as long as nobody objects, I think the Law Department can just add those headings as a grammatical change. Were there any other revisions or any other topics anybody wanted to discuss this evening? Yes, Ms. Cole?
I did notice that there were some chapter numbers and section numbers that needed to be changed. I'll just send those to the Law Department.
Yes.
And I also had a question on page 21, under the Pension Commission, Section Three. And this is something that's been in there since the original that we're working from. It says, "The members appointed by the mayor shall serve for a term of six years commencing on the date of the meeting of the council in January." I don't know if that should be the first meeting in January, following the biennial municipal elections. It just sounds a little weird to just say, "commencing on the date of the meeting of the council in January."
Okay.
Or is that something we should maybe wait till April 6, then check with Attorney Small?
We can always submit it to her. She might send us a memo back, so that we have it at the April 6 meeting.
Okay.
So do you want to submit that to her, or would you like me to...
Do you want to submit that?
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll have her look at that sentence and see if she can get us a memo with new wording. Okay. Is there anything else from anybody? I'll just give you a minute to look through, I know you're still flipping through, so... Oh, one more thing I did want to bring up was Ms. Wysocki's email to us. She had asked that we change he/she to they. And my feeling is that that would make it grammatically incorrect in that case, because if we're referring to, for example, the mayor, to say they, that would be plural. So it's my feeling that he/she is more correct, so as long as nobody else has...
I think there's a lot that goes through there, a lot of it's just singular.
Yeah. Okay. I just didn't want to, to not comment on her email that she had sent us. Page 25, which is Section 11, Obligations of the Public Utilities Division. This I did not see in our notes, but I think we would want to change it. It still says Electric and Water Departments or the Sewer Authority. And I believe we had changed that throughout the Charter to Electric, Water, and Sewer Divisions. So that, yes.
I think, I think we did discuss that, because, and I think Attorney Small suggested that we leave that the way it is, because it refers to as constituted prior to the effective date of this Charter.
Okay, so for that section, we're, we'll leave this?
I think, I think for that section, we decided to leave that.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Does anyone have anything else? Still, I know we're still flipping through, so I'll give you one more, one more minute. I think we're all set, unless anybody has anything else they would like to bring up? Okay, well, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry, the minutes, yes. So we have our minutes of February 16, 2017. Thank you. Does anyone have any edits to those minutes?
Just one, on page four, line 13, table of context, should be table of contents.
Is our motion to approve the minutes of February 16, 2017?
For move.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and now, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. This meeting is adjourned.